I know we are being taken tonight's board meeting if be available in a couple of days. I'm gonna skip most of this, I guess start with the village school sale. And Mr. Kiel is here to provide us with some information regarding the sale of commercial property.
Okay. I got familiar with the information that Mr. Coughlin provided and it looks like it's one, a question mark as to how you proceed and what you're looking at. In the, I'll just start at the thirty thousand foot level. When you're selling a piece of property, looking at the value, you look at the cost and the cost of repair or improvement. In this case here, you've got estimates for three hundred and fifty thousand, give or take, for demolition, if that was the decision that the building couldn't be used. The renovations that are outlined are quite extensive if you're going to keep it and use it at a school. Some of the things that come to mind to me immediately are looking at the demographics. Right now, the enrollments in schools are decreasing, but, you know, the Hampshire is gonna grow and Pembroke is gonna grow along with it in the ensuing years. And the question that I would have if I was a member of the school board or the select board would be, if we don't need it today, do we want to retain it and use it in the future? What other options do we have if we part with this piece of land, which is a sizable chunk? If it's sold, then part of the consideration in terms of valuing it is the cost of demolition, but also what does the town want to see? What's the developer gonna run into for roadblocks if they go in with a project that doesn't necessarily fit the vision of the select board or the powers that be? And, you know, a great example of that is Section 8 housing. You can fill it as fast as you can build it, but I'm not sure the town would get enthusiastic about a thousand units of Section 8 housing down there. So there's a lot of questions to be answered. I'm happy to be a part of that process. I was talking to Mr. Coughlin about the fact that if we do go down the road of marketing the property and looking at the potential and so forth, I would plan to enlist the aid of Brenda Litchfield, who's the owner of the property of Concrete Commercial. She was my brother Jody's partner before Jody retired. She has extensive background in not only commercial, but also financing and that aspect. I had a lot of background in development. My family did a couple hundred units of development in the eighties. So the process and the understanding of what's involved in looking at how that piece might be used is not something that's unfamiliar to me. So, you know, the questions that I would have is, is in your considerations, have you had discussions with select board and looking at the potential uses of that? Have there been any discussions as to what the vision is for development if it's sold to somebody else? If it goes on the market, the first person in with the right amount of money owns it and, you know, they go, they run correct it. So a lot of questions and...
Well, we reached out to the town, one of the first things we did was reach out to the town, as far as to see if they had any interest in the property itself for a kind of a public use, you know, maybe a park, kids' center, whatever. They milled it over for a period of time and decided they didn't really want any part of what's down there at the moment. We did do a little bit of research into the zoning of that area. We haven't really spoken with the select members of what they could envision down there.
Did it matter of what they could envision or was the zoning supposed to go there? Because what is zoning allowed, for example, like commercial?
I believe that's residential, like commercial down there.
Yeah, residential, I think there are other categories.
I think they're working on reconfiguring the zoning as well down there. So whatever it is, there's a possibility of changes to that as well.
Might not be that anymore. We have had a couple committees go through as far as disposition of that property. We've discussed keeping the property with the building, talked about the building, the property without the building. If we need to expand our other properties, school properties in town have expansion room. So the thought was we'd likely not need the property in the future. The building down there, they, for me, if basically it's gotten, it's not worth trying to make a breakback to, breakback a lot. So we'd be in a tear it down, build something new situation down there. And the research and the discussions we've had, we do have space elsewhere to build if we need, if we need it. And we don't really feel confused with the building or the property at this point.
Okay. So I figured there'd been some discussions and considerations and kinda wanted to get up to speed on where, where you were at. My son is an architect up in Maine and I had a brief discussion with him after Dan had called me and he's done some restoration projects up there where they turned some large brick buildings into stores and apartments and a multitude of uses. The demographics in the, in the state is such that the baby boomer generation, and I'm kind of in the middle, tail end of it, but our, our segment is the largest by far. And I'm seeing in the real estate world where a lot of the four bedroom, large three bedroom houses are more difficult to sell because people are looking to downsize. And our kids are looking for smaller houses because we're not having three and four and eight like my parents' kids anymore. So it's, it's a situation where I could see the possibility of some type of an elderly housing complex down there with a good bit of the building, which is on a single floor. Now, I haven't been in the building since, a friend of mine was a teacher back thirty or forty years ago in there. But, you know, we would, we would look to consider any and all possibilities before we just said, okay, it needs to be demolished and the rules and regs relative to what might need to be done in terms of apartment buildings might be substantially less onerous than what you're looking at for school use.
Yeah, I think our general desire here is to, we're gonna sell it off, sell it with the building on it.
Right.
So we, at this point, don't wanna get into demolition of that building, but someone else. And we understand that there's a cost for that and we can't ask for a quarter million dollars for that property because it's a three hundred dollar, thousand dollar liability if it's not.
Right. And in general, what you're looking at if you're selling developable property is either, if you're looking to maximize the return, then you have to be willing to let the developer come in with a very extensive sales agreement that gives them the rights and abilities to explore and attempt to get subdivision approval. And if that's their expense and you cooperate with them in terms of forms and so forth and you design in the process with the planning board. But that's a long-term kind of a hoping it goes well and you're gonna get more money because they don't have the risk of spending all the money on surveying and engineering and planning and so forth without knowing that they have the property tied up. And, you know, you'd be looking probably on a project of that size a year or more on a sales agreement. Now, if you're looking at selling it to somebody who wants to come in and do a development there, but you're not gonna allow them the time to work with the opportunity to get approvals, they're gonna temper their offer probably by a half or more. Because the risk involved in getting into something and then not being able to do something with it is pretty extreme. So there's, there's different options depending on what your motivation or goal is and is money more important or time more important? You know, we can work with either.
Someone to speak to the board, because I think we've got a general gist of what's going on. I think the sooner we get rid of it, the better.
Okay.
Money, although always important, is less of a factor. It's more important to get that piece of property back on the tax rolls. Then it's for us to land a huge check, a shovel.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Well, as a taxpayer in town, I'm always advocating for getting as much as we can for it too. So, so the, the process that you are, of mine, have me start the process would be that I would bring in Concrete Commercial to work in conjunction with me to give the town every available resource and asset in the sales and development world. We would be able to expose it through three states in our MLS system, Maine, Hampshire, and Vermont. Now, if you say anything that's on the, the net goes worldwide, but our commercial through the, the near and system goes three states. There's one that's a Cyborg system, which is state in Hampshire. But the, the opportunity would be out there in a wide area and well-recognized for people looking for development property. We would have to do some research in terms of what could be done. We wanna be talking with the, with the town relative to any changes or plan for rezoning and what type of thing might be met with assistance, what would be welcome so that we could try to head our marketing in, in that kind of a direction. In terms of the costs on it, the, the fees might change depending on what the outcome is relative to the net value of it. We would look to have a, an upfront fee of something in the neighborhood of twenty-five hundred dollars for covering our time to do the work and research. In terms of a, a, a marketing fee generally in, in something like this, that's seven or eight percent somewhere in that neighborhood. But we would also have a minimum probably in the range of ten thousand if the sale happened and we would trade a little money changing hands because of the substantial amount of work to do in a project of this magnitude.
My next question. Other questions?
What are you looking at, the tunnel?
That, if I had a crystal ball and...
I mean, just as far as the initial process on preparing it for marketing.
Yeah, good question. I mean, the first thing I'd wanna do would be to get together with Mr. Coughlin and Brenda and I to do a tour of the facility. We'd wanna have discussions with the town. We're, you know, somewhat familiar with the zoning and subdivision regulations, but looking at exceptions that might be made. I live in the town of Epsom where I am, on, on the board of the directors of Elderly Housing, where we put fifty units on fifteen acres and we have two acre zoning per unit. So exceptions can be made depending on what the motivations are. So we would be doing a lot of educating and exploring the different uses that might apply there so that we didn't overlook anything because obviously the highest and best use is what's gonna bring the most money and that's where we're, we're all trying to head. The, the cost on the demolition, I think it was in the two thousand sixteen dollars, is that correct or is that a more recent?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's changing and getting more extensive as the restrictions grow at the state level with disposal of hazardous materials and, you know, it used to be you could burn construction materials, now if there's any paint or anything, you can't. So it all goes into hazardous fill. So there would be some updating relative to demolition costs that would obviously come into play for any developer looking at the project. So i- in terms of answering your question, there's something that we would get on right away and, you know, make every effort to get the process started. We wouldn't want to rush into a listing agreement until we had a good idea of what the opportunities were and where we might be heading because obviously that's going to factor into what the value is. And there's a good amount of research that we need to do before we can come to you with any kind of definitive understanding of what the value might be.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, so at this point, if, if the board chose to stop moving forward, you would provide us with a proposal for the, the upfront?
Sure.
You know, the cost, do the upfront work and get to the point of what's in.
Right. We, we would, we would get you a, a formal proposal with fee structure in there depending on how things head. And Brenda and I could probably get you a better idea of timeframe after we got a few days to look into it a little bit more and, and be sure, you know, more of what the options and opportunities are there. Obviously, a, a very valuable piece of land from the standpoint of the amount of acres with town water and town sewer, assuming that both of those capacities have room to, to accommodate what might go in. I was involved in a project in Allenstown several years ago where we were almost with the planning board approval stage and then town sewer was not available. So the whole thing folded. So, and I know that you guys are tied in with them and there's been some discussions in the past of who has the rights to which portion.
Put it so nicely.
I work in both towns.
Well done.
So, I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of questions that needed to be answered before we could say, here's, here's the best option.
Okay, questions for Mr. Kiel? We'll talk to him later, can discuss this a little bit later. Okay?
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back to you in a minute. Let's be in the conference room. Right now, is that clean? Any questions, comments, comments? Okay, okay. Okay. Any questions, other comments? All the time. Okay.
Number nine now has four items. And I would propose adding three S for a P A component.
Do you have some donations? No, not this one? Can I turn it around?
Yes. You had a question that I get more information regarding the lunch, lunch prices that was a little bit confusing last time. So if I could just relay Amber's response, that would probably be easier. So she says that every year we need to be in the state standards of what our lunch prices should be. We use a tool that shows us what we need to increase our prices to for next year to be compliant each year. This is looked at. If we only do the minimal, minimum of seven cents, we'll probably be at this point again next year. And maybe more depending on what the standards are, we don't know that until next year. So instead of coming back next year for another increase, if we did the twenty-five cents this year, hopefully we'll be better for a few years unless the standards first change on again. So she's proposing a twenty-five cent increase to hopefully carry it through the next few years instead of a seven cent increase.
The question is, is it a motion?
No, that's a question.
Second. Okay, questions?
I think I'm where you were at last time.
Yeah.
Still being like for the first couple of years, you're paying more than you need to, like, it might to not have to take that action every single year, but if that means still they're paying an extra thirteen cents for every meal for two years, then it's not a lot. It's not like a whole lot of owners are important to discuss this and approve it at one meeting per year and stuff. It's breaking my heart.
Where would that surplus money go? I mean, assuming that it is thirteen cents a meal, that adds up. So in a year, where does it surplus?
And probably in the Hoover budget, which does not help fund one budget.
That's hard, that would be, okay.
Yeah. And this, is the recommendation from the department and we would certainly, or we will completely be seven cents with money.
If it goes to seven cents, what's the exact number of points?
I'm sorry.
Are you thinking of saying thirty-two or two fifty?
Well, it's a weird number that I don't remember.
Right. What is the number?
Two thirty-two or two fifty-seven. I don't remember if it's two twenty-five now or two fifty.
Twenty-five hits a bill with me, but I'm not...
Actually, that's what my, my initial thought was, that we don't have.
What happens if we don't?
We're required to.
What was the question?
Well, there's a whole host of problems if you don't comply with the S E registration. It can affect our funding.
Okay.
But if you're, if you're covering costs at the dollar amount that's on it now, I guess they don't understand how that doesn't work?
Yep. It doesn't. They pool up as an S A U and they determine, I think it's because we're pooled as an S A U, which is tempered, we probably suck. But the US government doesn't, you tried every which way to explain how an S A U works and that they are individualistic.
So because...
Doesn't matter.
Because our school lunch program is very well managed.
Right.
We get ten lines because of others' eyes?
Increase seven cents, balance the entire town out.
But that money's not shared, obviously.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
We're getting into an area that the calories keep getting into, that school lunch program. We've been here before.
One stop, yeah, lunch program.
Um, two fifty?
Two fifty, I know what it is.
Oh, we have two fifty. Okay. So you need to amend this. We have so many... One hundred and seventy cents. Hold it down.
Hold it down and then have a new, whatever you need.
I mean, if we amend it right now, otherwise they have to come back to us if we don't amend it.
Oh, no, we can, we can do...
Oh, okay.
We can hold it down, then we can either amend it or amend it.
Whatever they say.
Sure.
Do you see, the kids all pay on their account, correct? There's no cash change.
No.
No, it's seven cents, point two, ten cents. If you don't...
You have to change the...
Rounding it, no, it's seven, whatever. Right.
Two fifty right now.
Two fifty.
So we, we have to go with seven cents or we can't go with five.
That's correct.
But we can't go with ten.
I'm just thinking in the exchanging change, a lot of times, um...
Do a lot of kids, do...
Yeah, right.
Do a lot of kids pay cash or is it mostly on?
I'm sorry?
Cash.
We're...
We can't start a system by the time they, so they're putting stuff in, so aren't just gonna have to...
What would folks like to do? We're, sounds like we're on the hook to seven, that, the name.
Cannot tell you, so I should go to off setting.
And go to the surplus in food services, the kids that don't pay still has to come on the general fund budget. You can't come on the surplus.
Correct.
Just stupid. Been fighting this for years. I remember the last time we had this conversation.
I was gonna say.
I'm gone.
Naive question, but do all three buildings currently end in either zero or five? Do they end up?
Yes. I'm making a doubt.
So if we went at ten cents, it would still, all three buildings would still end in either the zero or five.
Skip the pennies.
Skip the pennies. Then the trauma that goes with that. So I guess I would recommend that we move to questions.
Hold it down.
Hold it down. Get a motion for closing down.
All right, that one's good. So all of the favor of increasing the prices by twenty-five cents? All opposed? Motion for increasing by ten cents?
Don't move.
Second. We have a discussion. All the favor.
All right.
Okay. I suppose it is.
And we can get together next year.
I'll look at it a little bit earlier. We think it's a temporary issue.
I love to defend with O G F.
So the, you know, as you'll recall, maybe, maybe not, when we did the E rate funding, the E rate program is ending and we put extraordinary amount of money aside to do all of the wiring. So the phones aren't covered, but because we're gonna do all the wiring, if we get the new phone system now, we can hook it to the new wiring. If we don't get the phone system now, S P A, they have to keep the cap re-wire there for the smart phone system and then they'll be, they'll have to go back to them later later on to do this. Our phone system is horrendous. The S A U just got away from that phone system. They are not nine one one compliant, so they're not considered safe. They are not made and longer, so we rely on eBay and people that can fix the money break because you can't buy anyone. So it's just been a budgetary issue. Mary was able to take, find an extra ten thousand dollars in E rate and she's got more recent quotes and is not ready to do the wiring. So the phone system was brought down to be about thirty-two thousand dollars-ish. I asked Amber to run updated numbers for year ends today, understanding that she's just barely asking buildings to, you know, start to go about P Os and such, so it's preliminary. But right now you're approximately four hundred thousand dollars for year end balance and then also approximately four hundred thousand dollars for residential. So we're really in danger. So even if that was to change, you're still...
Is that four hundred? How much, how much do we need for a way to...
More in our pool?
Just so we have a real idea of the cost of that though.
I don't think it's close to that. No, I agree with you. We had five hundred thirty-five there.
Yeah, I think it was under, I think it's around one hundred and twenty. I'd pick somewhere in that area as well, too.
So it makes a lot of sense to do it now, it's gonna save money, it's gonna save labor and it will bring up nine one one compliance. We've had nine one one compliances a couple of times now and had very long platations. So I would think it would be a matter of time before we would be able to do it.
The fact that we're not nine one one compliant, that means it has to have insurance.
I don't know that that's been discussed.
But not yet.
Yeah, I don't know. And yet, you know, maybe, I don't know. I don't remember. But I think it would be possible, yes.
So S P A's phone system is ancient. Someone's phone system went down this week.
Sounds fun.
What kind of addition and challenge has just started to occur? We're pretty good shape.
The three of them are fairly recent.
We're pretty good shape.
They're not P O I T though, like the S A U just went in. I assume that's what that person...
That's correct.
But these guys are in much better shape than he is.
Yes.
I think we're pegging that's before the ability to spend thirty-two thousand dollars on every phone business yet.
Questions?
Second. You have any questions, comments? Anything that you want to ask?
Do you know what to ask? And as far as the technology that's along with it? I mean, I, I think the pull-out consideration is big. If they seal everything up with new lines and then they have great phones, they don't use those lines, just, you know, structure costs of opening everything back up and making all... and then they have great phones that don't use those lines, just, you know, destruction cost of opening everything back up and shaking all, just, it's like placing a water pump in your car, getting the timing built on at the same time, it's, we're saving labor.
Looking at, again, turnaround time.
For all of the wiring, have those scheduled, um, for a week this summer?
Oh.
I, I'm pretty sure they had it set for the summer, um, and give you approved phone, you give them right away.
Then we can come with it, we can come with this money anywhere.
Right.
And go, I go past July with it. Okay, any other questions? All right. All right, and then for quarter reports. Our competitors do it. Doing well. And I think your elections in Holland?
There are, uh, twenty-fourth, May twenty-fourth. Getting close to it, and, um, I believe our Senate is also planning their year end retreat. And we should retreat, anybody who's ever like, feeling very, sort of, what they've got.
The commission board?
We need some money.
That's all. Budget commission, please go with questions.
I can't move.
Uh, case reports? People's on here. Did they move in? Did anybody know if they moved in? They were supposed to.
Yeah, I've not heard that they did, um, but.
I haven't seen a question.
I, I had a, perfect, question board.
A P testing started today for this week and the next, and we have our senior class drop at the party on Friday this week for Fairleigh Vermont, the Hilbert Outdoor Center, our annual retreat, and we'll be there Saturday, and part of the Sunday afternoon, and then of course, our bike setting event Saturday at one, where we induct three members each into our performing arts, and that's what I call it again. The board.
What up front, looks good.
They were both constructed by our wood shop, our students, yep.
Nice, question for Holland. Full swaying of spring, except for sports.
Again, despite Josh's effort and his crew, we have not been on our field yet. Um, we do have a game scheduled tomorrow at the high school, so again, thanks to Josh's crew and credit, we're going to have a three-game, eight home games. Uh, we have one game, and the kids have not been on the field yet. No, very much, I wanted to. Um, that's, that's been a struggle. Uh, we're just getting ready to do eighth grade in the SASS testing, we're getting ready to do sixth grade tonight, and we'll let out, uh, a little bit crazy, you know, for the old boys, uh, that, um, will be done, and we're getting ready to be out of the school year. Here at the, we have the little big steel day at the end of the day, end of the year, when we have, you said apartment, uh, the whole school once, and we have teams in the middle of, uh, five grade, uh, it's a whole day of dance for the cookout, uh, and it's a pretty great day for the kids. So we're gearing up for that.
What do you think?
What do you think? I do not know.
What do you think?
The town, they may be a lot of.
So our dirt beaters, Monday Tuesday and tomorrow, um, are doing the sound test as well. Uh, we had an onsite visit, and the state come in to make sure that we were in mind spending, and we got an excellent rating. Um, the teachers and Karen, mainly the basketball, they're paying a job, making sure that that has been, we have fourth graders, so that makes it, uh, they need to stand on stage. Um, and there is a lot that goes into testing, because it's on the computer now, your entire system, all of your programs have to go into testing mode. You have to make sure other teachers aren't streaming, because that could shut down the process, you've got to teach the kids, especially at our age, um, how to just navigate, um, through the test, instead of it really being about the knowledge that they know, there's a, it's an interesting, um.
Take home.
Yeah, exactly, but our kids are taking the test extremely seriously, um, I think that we struck a really nice balance this year of saying, um, just like in life, there are certain times that you put your best foot forward, and we want you to do that without clogging any names, um, which is, we've got that, but we want to. We have our tribute to Village School coming up, May eighth. Um, Seaside Mary and a group of teachers have been working very hard on that. Um, the shift, the, um, the merge is coming along beautifully, um, the village staff is doing a professional rock, getting ready slowly, just packing things up as they go, so it's not a huge effort. At the end, Josh has been phenomenal with, um, the facilities part, um, we, I think last time we got, uh, was it it? We have the workroom been done? No, because that was over April vacation, so we just moved here, but all of our doors, the external doors have been redone, um, which is fantastic, and bring a ton more sunlight into the, um, buildings, and then our workroom got done, so that shift will be able to happen before school is first, and where we can shift now so that that's not a work. Now, we play in that level for better, um, so what I'm going to do.
Questions for the people, John?
Is there a place, like in, in Holland, prior to beginning school next year, just to kind of, either for the families or the community, to kind of see what they've done?
I know that we started conversations about, um, definitely having a new student foundation, but we have, um, we're also talking about having an assembly at the end of the year, kind of a startup, to be off like, oh, we're all going to be up there, but I think to that point, maybe we can, um, generate some, some.
Kind of. The board, and we can imagine the community goodwill for folks to have an opportunity to see all the great changes they've done.
Yeah, we could probably pair that with our vetting day, because our vetting day is one of our best days, because the school is starting having families and veterans come in and on our members, so maybe do something along those lines.
Or a barbecue.
Or a barbecue, yeah.
Any other questions? Uh, obviously, yes, I got an email from the people asking if we could apply to be. Uh, the objection lifts up and needs to be done, or is it, is it knocked off the flip, and we can take up?
I would love to see them knocked off the list, and it's not that it can't wait, I think it's okay. Um, I would just mention that the, um, the two new policies that we added, the student meal charging policy, um, again, that's another F P A, um, F P A update, um, and then the data governance, as in both of them, we'll be speaking to all student, I, um, so those are mandatory, they're listed for screenings before the, and if there's questions, emails, that I can have you ask her to answer the question, because they're both pretty specific.
Or we'll just say the closing word.
Which one?
Third, first, the E F anyway.
Oh.
Any, any, if you want to make, just get a hold of us, we just know what they are. Okay, so we're good with politics? Wait until they come. Information line?
I had one, um, just to let you know, I did sort of a request to have you guys meet to the electronic manica, and they, um, it, it, she was optimistic about mid-May. Um, I haven't had it updated yet, so May-ish.
I got a couple. T R S graduation, I don't, she suggested you're interested. I was, oh, sorry. Somebody was interested. When's graduation, for ten? No.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Thirteen. Sixteen. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I've got, um, I mean, not this year, but starting with your, a lot of kids in T R S for four, five years, so I'd be looking to onboard that, and you can write it up.
She was my, I'll, I'll, I'll get you.
I wasn't going to object, so thank you.
Do you want to discuss, still with sale, we heard from Jeff, do you want to take any action in the evening?
I, I don't know.
We should discuss.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we see what that does.
What do people think? What do people think?
I mean, my experience really, um, it doesn't seem to make sense that there is a way to extract the full district from that property. I think we should. The town is made it so clear that they want nothing to do with, you know, leaving that up to us. From what I recall, Josh's area, maintaining it as a non-occupied building is fraught with risks. Sounds like someone in security says, like, you could mitigate that with support, and if somebody can mitigate that with support, I think that we should be considering that.
I agree with this. I, I'm in complete agreement.
You don't have to say thank you.
No, I just wanted to hear if you had more. I, I was just, you know, the, again, um, I don't know if we should, I mean, again, not knowing the questions to ask, um, and I think before, um, I, it sounds like we're going to do, but I'd really want to see that fee proposal before we went, said, yep, let's do it. Um, you know, that'd be, that's my, that's my only concern at, at this point, so.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
I agree, um, and I think, I mean, not knowing anything about real estate, twenty-five hundred dollars upfront, and then eight percent for ten K, you know, we, there, in the committee, I don't, I don't know who they had spoken to, but there were estimates that had to, to have somebody come in and like do a full assessment of the property, and let, you know, everything that would have to be mitigated, and that they were, they had asked me between like twenty-five and fifty K, which is, uh, in my opinion, a land improvement I'd spend without knowing anything, but we're talking about somebody that's talking about bringing in a commercial real estate expert, that had worked in the direct area for as long as they have, um, and for that amount of money, uh, it, it's, it seems like a no brainer to get the options laid out on the table. Um, I, I think there's a term of consensus, that the taxpayer agreed to go ahead and get rid of it, and this just seems like a, a light pole way to do that.
I agree, um, should we ask Patty to move forward, let's get the proposal, let's make more of it, I don't think it's a huge rush here, I think another two weeks, we're not going to kill anybody.
Yeah, if we, if we can get it, we could also encumber the funding out of the, the, like.
Exactly.
Maybe if you contract with them now, and we can proceed, um, you don't have to worry about funding it next year.
Right.
Um, and then I did, if I can add, I, I did ask, um, requested to contact the attorney about the, um, boundary line.
Yes.
There, Josh helped me, we contacted the town planner, and really, there are no good maps with showing the lines, they suggested that we have a professional survey. Um, our attorney that would help with that agreed, however, if we're going to have a real there work on it, then we don't have to encumber the funding.
We're probably not to pay the survey, I mean, no matter what happens here, I think everybody, I'm sure there was, there was going to be some cost to uploading this, whether it's tearing the building down or selling it off, there's going to be some cost to that, so it's a matter of, maybe some other investment.
We could let that take a leak, and let us know at what point that should happen, so that can be part of there.
And again, if we can't afford it now, it's just an extent, I think it shows transparency, it shows the face, and it shows that we are determined to do the investment, what folks will just get from us on.
I mean, um, the attorney from our firm, um, what was that, Gus, said that he would be happy to handle it, was hoping to give the neighbors the, the portion that's derived.
Conveyed it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so you'll let Jeff to Jeff and ask him, ask him what he's starting? I mean, yeah, however we, with that, um.
Sure, one thing to, uh, when the proposal, pre-proposal does come in, you'll have the attorney to do that also.
Okay. So I see like a reasonable approach at this point.
I'll ask him to be the topic for the next meeting.
And, um, and if you don't want to be careful of surveys, please, if we get a, an expert more survey.
Yeah, if there's someone that, and you know local.
You would know that.
Yeah.
I would think so, too. I mean, the, the, this whole, Holden, Morgan Foxer. A little bit of the else, a little, yeah, that's a little survey, and I'm sure, he's got, he's got to be, he's got, he's got presidential, too, they don't get surveyed, so. He's got to have somebody.
Yeah.
Or maybe.
Or maybe somebody, okay.
I'm looking at.
That's all I know. Anybody else increase lines? Other comments? Yes, sir.
Uh, just a couple of things that have kind of come up during this meeting, I think a survey is going to be pretty expensive, just because of the number of flooding properties. I'll think of all the houses down Luden Street, you've got houses on Vincent, uh, they're going to need to look at all the seeds and square up, what the boundaries will need, so I, I think that's going to be a pretty pricey endeavor, and you might be better off, and I don't need that you're contracting with a speaker, discuss that with him, that's a cost that may be incurred by somebody who's planning to buy it versus who does, um, so I definitely just asked that question. I know what it costs to do a residential survey over on Buck Street, and just thinking of what that property is down in the village, and I know whenever they're trying to tax fees and stuff like that, they have issues with squaring up information just because, um, these pages, and things like that, that's just, it's probably going to be. Also, on the village thing, I guess we'd just be careful on, on Buck Street, talking about taking the first dollar that's offered to you, so we just give the impression that somebody doesn't want to give it, because they didn't offer, um, so just be careful how you're putting these, you know, about trying to look up. And then the phone system, I guess I didn't hear any details about brand or anything like that, I, I have a concern with the current technology director, maybe needing some penny wise, but town foolish decisions, um, and I just want to make sure that this is something that is, you know, not going to be obsolete and have us back on eBay looking for replacement, you know, phone stations and stuff in a couple of years, because we went with outfit three, you know, even something that nobody's ever heard of and goes out of business, you know, I, I, I've worked personally with shore telephone systems, they're a great product, I just didn't hear anything about what, what that thirty-two thousand is flying, you know, maybe a light D phone system. You already told the wrong answer, but it matters, but.
That's kind of mad.
Yeah.
I, I would echo that sentiment, that whatever is purchased here, let's, let's not buy the bottom, bottom of the barrel stuff, let's, let's buy stuff for the quality that we're going to. Because obviously, we use our phone for, for a long time, it'd be nice if we get.
I appreciate it anyway.
Twenty years, Adam. I want it to be a reasonable amount of time, but it's, not buy Jimmy's, Jimmy's phone to the school. Anybody else? Good? Non-public, David?
Yeah, I am pleased with that.
See, what, this is a non-public session under Hampshire S A ninety-one dot eight four three, roll number two, A, D, and C. I'll call both, get a motion to feel minutes.
Motion to feel minutes.
Second, all of them have their met.
Fine.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I would like to nominate, uh, Hannah Owens for Mount Peqia.
Who did you nominate?
And, um, Janelle Landry for Guiding Peqia, and Alcindavo as a nurse Peqia.
So much.
Second, okay. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Fine.
Okay. And we have a separate nation, so please take action on.
Yeah, motion to review. Second? Second, do you, any questions? All in favor?
I do.
Anybody else?
Four, that's four. Yep, I'm in.
You're good?
Good.
Okay, um, May eleventh, this Saturday, the ceremony here at P A for two hall, hall of things, if you can make it. Um, other than that, motion to.
That's all I can, just, those are the things you write.
That's right.
I agree with that, yeah.